Good morning, fellow senators. The Committee on Appropriations and Adjudications hereby reconvene as a committee on the whole. We were discussing the provisions contained in Bill Number 22, that's 33, which is in direct reference to Department of Corrections, Vice Speaker Cruz's legislation. And we now are moving into the next phase of the discussion of this particular proposal. I just would like to recognize the senators that are in the hallway right now. I understand the other senators are also going to be joining us very shortly. We do have Speaker Wampat, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Mike Siniklas, Senator Nerissa Underwood, Senator Rory Spieso, Senator Tom Ada, and Senator Mary Torres. Thank you very much, senators, for joining us this morning. And like I said, our other colleagues will be joining us very shortly. Based on a request for bifurcation of the discussion with, as it applies to Bill Number 22, that's 33, C.O.R., we will proceed in that fashion, section by section analysis, and then conclude based on the discussion on the last and final, and perhaps somewhat impactful, Section 7. So, based on that, Vice Speaker Cruz, did you want to make any comments as we initiate our review of the sections of Bill Number 22, that's 33? Did you want to make any comments before we proceed, section by section?
No, I think I spoke enough yesterday.
Okay. Colleagues, we are on Section 1, in reference to additional authorization. Because this legislation was accepted for purposes of discussion in the second reading, we, at the chair, will accept any amendments or any deletions or proposed changes to this particular legislation, not adoption of the section, because it's already been adopted and accepted in totality, but any amendments and any deletions will be entertained by the chair. Section 1. Any questions or comments? I do recall that there were concerns or questions raised with regards to Page 2, Line 2, the use of the term "review and concur." Any questions, amendments, adjustments? If not, moving forward to Section 2, which is carryover fiscal year 2014 appropriations for the office of the Attorney General. Carryover figure is approximately $700,000. Any proposed amendments or deletions? Madam Speaker?
Thank you very much. It may not be the right section, but I was wondering, because I know the Attorney General was saying that it is $700,000 is what she has lapsed, and that, you know, she was going to make sure that, one, she does not go over that dollar amount, because she's not coming back here to the legislature to use that money for the experts. However, in further discussion, and even the Vice Speaker set this to, and she alluded to it, that if they don't, and whatever the balance is, she would like to use it. Do we need to do this now, or do a separate bill that, you know, any lapsed, unused, rather, unexpended amounts of money from that $700,000, then, without having to come back here, could then just revert there for her use?
Madam Speaker, because she said she had no issues with regards to the intent of this and the provision contained therein, and also the sponsor of the legislature, Vice Speaker Cruz, has specifically stated that he would like to focus, remain focused on the court order injunction. I will yield to him if he would like to provide any additional comments, but...
I wanted to make sure that I didn't have a non-German provision in this bill, and that it was only going to be for the prison. I had offered her that I would introduce legislation when she finishes with hiring the consultants, the trial consultants, that if she had any money left over for other purposes in her office, we'll deal with that in a separate bill. But I didn't want to muddle the waters here by including something that I had not addressed in the original bill, which was finding money to comply with the court order.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Madam Speaker? Yes? Thank you, Madam Speaker. Any additional concerns or questions or comments on Section 2? If not, moving on to Section 3, authority of the Attorney General to procure experts. I see Senator Mike Siniklas reaching for the mic. Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Just based on what we discussed with the panel, a minor adjustment on moving the comma on Page 3, Line 1, after the word "basis," moving that to after the word "necessary."
On that initial amendment proposed by Senator Siniklas to relocate the comma after "basis" to after the word "necessary," all still on Line 1. No objection? So ordered. Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor.
That's all for Section 3, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Any other issues, questions, comments, or deletions or additions to Section 3? Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But I, you know, I really have, although in Section 3, it is not prescriptive that they will go out and procure the necessary consultants or expert witnesses on a sole source basis, that is not, you know, prescriptive. It is kind of like being given as an option. And I would think that maybe it may be appropriate to add at the end of Line 4, a sentence, really, to the effect that, to the maximum extent possible, procurement shall be achieved on a competitive basis, or, and I don't have the exact language right now, but that's language that I think would be appropriate to put in in Section 3 and in Section 4, you know, to indicate that we really need to do that, if we're going to try and find the best possible price. The statement was made yesterday that the quickest way to go is to go out and do sole source, and I disagree that, you know, by just kind of going directly, I think that probably the biggest stumbling block in any procurement is for the buyer to sit down and clearly specify what it is that they want. And we may find that, once that is done, and that is at least announced, and, you know, put it out there for a week, we may find that there's really a lot more, we'll say, vendors that may be available to provide those services, and maybe be able to provide, you know, competitive pricing, but just to go directly to somebody, I don't know, that's, you know, sole source procurement is really used on a rather infrequent basis.
Senator Ada, would you like to yield to the sponsor?
Yes. I would have no objection to having the good senator with legal counsel include a line that requires them to at least make the best effort to comply with procurement law, something along that lines. I'm sure they can work language out with his intent in there before we do the final version of the bill.
Okay. So, Senator Ada, if I can ask you to work with legal counsel in formulating your language, and as we conclude on Section 7, I will come back to you, because I would like to ensure that the committee has everything in terms of the language that is proposed in any amendments intact before we fully adopt it and then proceed to the committee or back to second reading.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Speaker Wampat, I'm sorry.
I mean, I know I'm sitting at his desk, and thank you for remembering.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, no, it's good, it's good. I was thinking that, you know, along that lines, but I don't know what exactly the language would mean, but I think that maybe the least that could be done, that the government, you know, does, of course, is at least to try to get, you know, three price quotations, so that then you can choose, then, you know, the lowest, not foregoing, of course, the quality of some of these formularies that, you know, we're going to need. Because based on what Claudia had mentioned, when, you know, I had asked that question, that if they were going to find the least expensive medication, if they're going out to procure, and there is this one company that the government has been working with, I'm not sure if I can, I don't even know how it would spell, but I think it's Pare or something, or Peri, Peri, you're right, Pharmaceuticals. And they are, as she said, you know, the cheapest, however, because of the fact that the government has a real bad reputation of not paying on time, that they no longer then want to work with them. And then that was actually clarified by saying that DOC actually can actually go to purchase drugs from a manufacturer, even the same company, and I was given the procurement law on Section 5270, government to purchase drugs from manufacturer, and they actually listed these particular agencies, either you can go as a whole, or you can go individually. So then, they're saying that, in essence, they could just go out on their own as well. So...
Madam Speaker, can I come back to you when we move to proceed to Section 4, because much of your comments is in regards to medicine?
Oh, okay, okay.
Senator Ada was still...
I'm just saying, only because the fact that it is sole sourcing, that, to add to that conversation, that at least get three quotes, in that way, then you can go with, you know, the lowest quote, and so then that's still part of the process, but...
So would you apply your statement to Section 3 also?
Yes, that's what I wanted to...
Vice Speaker Cruz, do you have any statements in regards to that particular concept? Madam Speaker, did you want to work with legal counsel to prepare an amendment? Okay, so we do have two proposed amendments that we will come back to, one proffered by Senator Tom Ada, and the other one by Speaker Wampat, on Section 3, that they will work with legal counsel in preparing. So any other questions, comments, deletions, or concerns on Section 3? Yes, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
In analysis, doing the analysis of whether to insert that language about requiring them to go through the three options, I would like to request that the panel maybe consider what the efficiency of that might be, because we're working against a timeline, and that's what this whole exercise is about, right, meeting certain timelines. So if the, in the working group, they can, or someone within the working group can ascertain whether that's going to be an impediment to them being able to procure in timely stock the thing by a certain date to be compliant, I think we have to be a little cautious about whether we go down that road.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Speaker Wampat?
I totally agree, and I don't want us to go through that long process of trying to procure, you know, the services or medications or what have you, and I'm behind you all the way. That's why I'm saying, and they indicated that yesterday as well, is that they actually know on island who these individuals are, who these companies are, that they can just go to them and say, "I know you deal with this, can we get a quote from you?" And then go to the second and the third, and then, that way, without them knowing what their prices are, then they can choose, then, the lowest. At least that is going to show an effort in trying to be as fair as they can, rather than just go out and get one company, knowing that there may be others. Sole sourcing means that nobody else can do it but that one particular company, so...
Thank you, Speaker Wampat. Senator Torres, you still have the floor.
It's understood, but again, it begs the question, just have that analysis and just make sure, because we don't want to, we don't want to impede their efforts.
When, as we return back to the proposed amendment by Speaker Wampat, I will entertain any discussion from yourself and any of our colleagues, to see if, in fact, that would meet and address your concern, because Speaker Wampat has already shared with us that she understands the timelines that will be met. So when she's prepared with her amendment, after Section 7, we will come back to Section 3 with her proposed amendment. We will discuss the provisions at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay? Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Siniklas? Any other questions, comments, or concerns on Section 3? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Gemma Spalding? Senator Frank Blas Jr.?
I just want to make sure that our people understand that, all three of you, thank you for joining us this morning. Okay, moving on, no other questions or comments on Section 3, with the understanding that as we conclude our discussion on Section 7, we will come back to the amendment by Senator Tom Ada and Speaker Wampat. Moving on to Section 4, General Services Agency permitted to procure medicine. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, on Section 4, it says, notwithstanding any other provision of the law, that GSA is authorized to procure medication directly from distributors for the Department of Corrections. And like I was sharing earlier, Section 5270, Chapter 5 of the Guam Procurement Law, it says here, whenever possible, this is for the government to purchase drugs from manufacturer, whenever possible, the Department of Administration, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Guam Behavioral Wellness Center, and the Department of Education shall purchase drugs, generic or otherwise, directly from the manufacturer, so as to ensure and maximize economy. So what then they're doing here in this case, although the law is very specific to those four departments and agencies, now, notwithstanding they're saying this particular law, then we want to allow for the Department of Corrections to go out and go directly now to the manufacturer to purchase drugs. So it is by law already for, you know, mental health, public health, GMH, Department of Education, so, in essence, then, I mean, what I'm saying is I don't disagree with this, and that's why we've got the law to support it.
Are you proffering an amendment to substitute Section 4 with that particular language?
No, 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 not at all. It's, oh, to...
To incorporate DOC?
Amend the current law?
To substitute, yes. To take the current law, substitute with Section 4, the provisions in Section 4, and insert the district court order as a caveat, if not, leave it open, open for...
Ask the chair, the author of the bill.
Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
I already felt bad that I, there were so many additional provisions that I was adding in here as a substitute. I would have liked to have had amended 5270, but I didn't have a public hearing on that. If, I'm not going to be ruled out of order by including something that wasn't germane to the specific purpose of addressing the DOC court order, I would have, I would like to have that amended, and this section wouldn't be necessary. Yeah, I understand, but it was a specific section. In this one, I'm just giving them the authority for this specific purpose to do it, just for this court order, and in a separate bill, I didn't want anybody to say that should be a standalone bill. I wanted to just address the court order. But if I'm going to get support for putting in DOC into this, into this section, we could replace Section 4 with an amended 5270, if there is not going to be a major objection on the floor.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Speaker Wampat, you still have the floor, and then Senator Frank Blas Jr., you still have the floor.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear that from the author. You know, the procurement law, as Senator Tom Ada had mentioned, is a very old law, and that's the reason for now the reform of it. And when this law, of course, was written, and since the 16th Guam Legislature, they thought that these are only the departments and agencies, really, who would be administering, you know, non-psychootropic medications, and that's why Department of Education is listed, because of DYA, and then at the time when nurses used to distribute medications. So it just stands to reason that now, of course, we know that even in our prison, that we do have inmates who require, you know, these medications, so it just makes sense that they would do that.
Madam Speaker, on your particular issue, and then I will entertain Senator Frank Blas Jr., I'm going to take a three-minute recess, so that, in fact, the clerks can produce a copy of the existing provision of law, and that we're all on the same page, okay, so that we can substitute it accordingly, otherwise, we're going to be talking around the circle. So five-minute recess, or three-minute recess. We do have a copy of subsection 5270, government to purchase drugs from manufacturer. Speaker Wampat, you still have the floor.
Thank you. After, you know, hearing the author's concern about wanting to do this but not overwhelming, of course, and being accused of it being non-German, but I, and thank you for that recess, because we were able to have that dialogue, and I hope I'm not speaking out where nobody maybe agrees. Okay, they do, is that, you know, to just go in and take Section 5270 on Title V, Guam Procurement Law, 5GCA, to just amend that, and right after, where it says Wellness Center, delete the "and," they put the comma, the Department of Education...
Madam Speaker, if we can just, we'll just interchange the two sections, and then I will entertain your amendment to your amendment.
Oh, okay.
Okay, please?
Sure, no problem.
Just so that we're all tracking. Okay, senators, there's a motion by Madam Speaker to change Section 4, which reads, "General Services Agency permitted to procure medicine," to swap that with Section 5270, "government to purchase drugs from manufacturer." Any questions, comments, or objections? No objections? So ordered. Okay, Madam Speaker, on your proposed amendment.
Okay, so the amendment then, for Section 4, would be then the section, which is to amend Section 5270, and just strike out the "and" after "center," and put Department of Education, then, "and," the Department of Corrections, "shall purchase drugs, generic and otherwise," and so...
On the amendment, to the amendment of subsection 5270, which is now Section 4, to delete the word "and" just before the Department of Education, insert that "after education," and then add Department of Corrections. On that amendment to the amendment, any discussions, comments? Senator Siniklas, you're recognized, on the proposed amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I guess for the sake of dialogue, Mr. Chair, excuse me. For the sake of dialogue, you know, when you read Section 5270, it concludes of the language, "so as to ensure and maximize economy." And Section 5270 basically authorizes the Department of Administration, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and the Department of Education, and with this amendment to the amendment, we're going to be including the Department of Corrections, "shall purchase drugs, generic or otherwise, directly from the manufacturer, so as to ensure and maximize economy." Now, just in looking at 5270, and in taking into account the realities, for example, of the Guam Memorial Hospital, where because of their issues with making timely payments to vendors, the procurement of these drugs, generic or otherwise, directly, for example, by GMH to the manufacturer, is not ensuring and maximizing economy, because they're now having to pay so much more, being a vendor with a bad credit history with the, I mean, being a buyer with a bad credit history with their vendor. One of the things that we may want to consider, I don't, maybe perhaps not now, but definitely in the future, is reorganizing this buying structure, perhaps into a separate government entity that's responsible strictly for purchasing on behalf of all of these agencies in bulk, because those bulk purchases would save us more money, and we would also kind of reset the credit relationship with the government and these vendors. And the reason why I want to kind of discuss that is because, in the budget, we already have a funding source for pharmaceuticals, we have the Pharmaceutical Fund, that receives a direct appropriation from a percentage of our business privilege taxes. And so perhaps we can, when I look at the original language, we're basically creating a venue for us to be able to allow for the purchasing of drugs to comply with the court order, that's the original language. This new language will amend existing law to allow DOC to make purchases, not just during the, not just to comply with the court order, but going forward, and of course, that's an amendment that makes sense. But perhaps in the interest of addressing all of these entities, in the interest of ensuring and maximizing economy through bulk purchases, as well as a reset of the credit relationship through the bundling of these purchases, we should consider a different purchasing arrangement altogether. But I support the amendment as it stands, I guess, just with the understanding also that I'm going to be looking very closely at perhaps reorganizing this purchasing arrangement somehow in the future, and I just wanted to put that on the record for my colleagues to understand, that way, if a bill comes out in the not-too-distant future, we can know where it came from. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Siniklas. I apologize. Senator Frank Blas, you have the floor. You're good? Okay. Speaker Wampat, your hands raised.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to, of course, add on to that conversation by our previous speaker, because there was a time, you know, of course, I'm giving my time away here, my age away, when a DOE, when GSA would actually do bulk purchasing, and under them, of course, and they'll wait for everybody to turn in, and the entire government of Guam would go out and buy it in bulk, and therefore, it's cheaper. So I do support, you know, the previous speaker's comments. The other thing that was important to remember, that GSA mentioned yesterday, Claudia had mentioned, is that, yes, because already of the bad name that GMH has, what she could do in this case, though, for DOC, is to then establish a line credit for them, so then they'll be able to... is to then establish a line credit for them, so then they'll be able to just draw down, you know, the money asked, you see they're purchasing it without having it, without having the reputation that GMH has with this particular pharmaceutical company. And by, you know, the amendment that we've just done now, authorizing them to do it, makes it now so much easier for GSA to be able to do that.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On the amendment to the amendment, we're still on the amendment to the amendment to insert Department of Corrections. No objections? So ordered. Any further discussion on section four as amended? No further discussions on section four as amended. Senators, moving on to section five, reporting requirements, or Senator Frank Blasch, on section four, section five?
Actually, Mr. Chair, if you don't, you know, notwithstanding ground rules and the House rules, if we can go back to section four, there is a little--
Back to section four?
Yeah.
Okay.
And give me a one-minute recess, please, on this.
One-minute recess, Senators. Senator Frank Blasch, either of you have the floor. Okay, you're willing to use the Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz on section four.
I'll make the motion today for reconsideration of the action of the body. And is there an--
There's a motion to reconsider the action of the body in interchanging section four with section 5270, Government to Purchase Drugs from Manufacturer. Any objections on the reconsideration? Question? No objections? So ordered. On the vote to revert back to section four as introduced in the legislation?
Yes.
Okay, on that motion to revert back to section four as introduced by Vice Speaker Cruz in Bill number 22, no objections? So ordered. Vice Speaker Cruz, you still have the floor.
I believe there's an amendment to the section, a very minor amendment. So otherwise, if we can just keep this section for this court order, we, let's move.
Clerk, are we clear on the action of the body? Okay, so we're back to the original provision. Speaker Wampat, you have the floor on section four as originally incorporated and reconsidered by the body. Any other questions or comments? Senators Siniklas, you're recognized on section four as originally provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going on the original language and referencing what we spoke about with the panel yesterday on page three, line eight, I would like to proffer an amendment, just adding the word, after the word "basis," adding the words "as necessary", comma, and that will make it consistent with the amendment we did in section three.
On the amendment to section four, line eight, right after the word "basis," insert "as necessary," then comma, by Senator Siniklas. Any questions, comments? No objections? So ordered. Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor. Any further discussion on section four as amended, as reconsidered, and as amended? Yes, Senator Espada, you're recognized on section four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm going to speak a little bit slower, just to force you to speak a little bit slower. But I have a concern with the very last line on, well, the, you know, on line seven, excuse me, line 10. It said, "Provided that the total cost savings must be more than 20% less than the cost paid by the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority." That would seem to imply that if you can't reach that threshold, then the purchase will not go through. So if this is in keeping with trying to follow the court order, then if they cannot find a medication that is 20% less than what GMH pays for the medication, then we could be stuck. And again, the whole process, this whole bill's purpose is to try to expedite and give the authorities the ability to be able to move quickly to address it within the timelines that the court has set. And I just want to bring that to the attention at least for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Espada, do you have a proposed amendment to section four?
At this time, I do not. But I want to bring that to the floor because somebody else might be able to have that amendment already in their mind, and I will leave it to them. Unless, if nobody makes it, then I believe we need to amend that.
I will entertain any additional comments from yourself, Senator Espada, as we depart section four. But Senator Torres, you have the floor. And then Senator Tom Ada.
Just a point of information. That question was brought up and discussed yesterday with the panel, and they mentioned that using the sole source procurement was an option, and that when they exercise that option, that they have this provision that it, that should they exercise that option, it should result in a savings of at least 20% from what they would normally get if they were to go through, they would norm, it would be 20% less than what GMH would be able to do. So it wasn't necessarily a mandate, it was just if you should, the way I understood it, Jim, was the, they explained to us, Fred and Ishihara, yesterday, that the reason for that was just to ensure that if they were to go through this option, that it would in fact be a savings over another option.
Mr. Chair, if I may just--
Thank you, Senator Torres, Senator Espada.
And I really appreciate Senator Torres's comments on that and reminder of what was said. However, in the bill, it says on line 10, "Provided that the total cost savings must," there's no discretion there. I mean, there is no deviating from that. That's a must, right? So, you know, be more than 20%. And again, I just want to note that as a counter to the information proffered.
Thank you, Senator Espada. Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized on section four. Senator Tom Ada, section four. You had your hands raised? Okay, Senator Mike Siniklas, you're recognized. On section four, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some consultation from legal counsel. On the recent amendment we made on line eight, to add the words "as necessary," there is a suggestion by legal counsel that we move some of those words to a different portion of the section, just to make it very, very clear as to what's intended. And so the suggestion from legal counsel is on line eight, starting of the word "on" and ending of the new word "necessary", comma. So that section that says "on a sole source basis as necessary," moving that particular statement down to line 10 before the word "provided." So we'll read from line seven into line eight, "Distributors for the Department of Corrections for the sole purpose of complying with the United." And then from line 10, it will read, "Case number 9100020, comma, on a sole source basis as necessary, comma, provided that total cost savings must."
On the proposed amendment by Senator Siniklas, please, colleagues, if we can make sure we're tracking this, is to delete the phrase "on a sole source basis as necessary" because that was the amended language, on line eight, and insert that right after, on line 10, right after the numbers 00020. So it would read 00020 on a sole source basis as necessary, and then continue on with that language.
I think that's--
Okay, there's a request by Senator Tom Ada that we--
Recession.
Get a printed copy of this particular section as amended, and then we can work off of that. So, three-minute recess. Senator Mike Siniklas, you have the floor. Senators, you have a copy of Senator Siniklas' proposed amendment before you. Okay, Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor.
Again, Mr. Chairman, this is just through the consultation of legal counsel, and thanks to the clerks for their quick work on producing this amended version at the request of Senator Attah. But you can see here how we do restructure the placement of the language in a way that would make it clear that we're authorizing sole sourcing for these pharmaceuticals, provided that they meet the threshold of being 20% less than that which is paid by, than the amount paid by the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. So by structuring the language in this fashion, if the medicines are not 20% less than what GMH is paying, then they cannot sole source. And that just, I guess, needs to be very clear for the members to consider. And there are pluses and minuses to that issue. Again, it speaks to the fact that GMH does have an elevated price for their pharmaceuticals because of their credit history with the vendor. So basically, what we're saying is, we don't want that credit history to adversely affect the prices paid by the General Services Agency when procuring pharmaceuticals for the Department of Corrections in compliance with this court order. I'll go ahead and stop there, Mr. Chairman, and if the sponsor of the bill can chime in perhaps on the perspectives of whether or not this language is going to get in the way of us being able to meet our compliance objectives.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Senators, we have the proposed amendment by Senator Siniklas to redirect some of the verbiage on a sole source basis as necessary. Any questions, comments, or changes? No objection? Or Senator Tom Attah, you're recognized. On the amendment.
I have no objection to the proposed amendment. I would probably like to proffer adding an additional sentence at the end. Well, maybe we should... Well, I would like to maybe add an additional language at the, sentence at the end there to read, to the maximum extent possible, procurement shall be achieved expeditiously and competitively as provided in 5GCA Article 3. So, in other words, you know, we're saying, you've already got the procurement law that outlines the source selection methods. So, you know, follow that as much as you can to the maximum extent possible, and if for some reason we keep stumbling all over ourselves, then fine, just go to the one guy that you think is going to give you the best deal.
On Senator Siniklas' amendment, Senator Tom Attah, if I can ask you, I will bifurcate the amendments so that, in fact, we focus on yours subsequent to the discussion of Senator Siniklas' proposal. On Senator Siniklas' amendment, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Tom Attah, on your verbiage, if you can regurgitate your proposed amendment, please. If you can repeat, I'm sorry.
So I would just like to add then a sentence at the end there, after the word "authority", to get across the idea that, you know, we're giving you the authority to go out and sole source. But I want to add the language, "to the maximum extent possible," comma, "procurement shall be achieved expeditiously and competitively as provided in 5GCA Article 3." And 5GCA Article 3 has to do with source selection methods.
Senator Attah, if I can ask you to once again repeat your amendment?
Okay. "To the maximum extent possible," comma, "procurement shall be achieved expeditiously and competitively as provided in 5GCA Article 3," period. And there's actually another sentence that goes with that. "Sole source procurement shall be a method of last resort."
Are you also adding that additional language?
Yes.
Sole source, sole source method?
Sole source procurement shall be a method of last resort. So what I'm saying is, at the beginning of that section, we're saying, you have the authority to do this, but at the end of that section, we're saying, but we really would prefer that you do it expeditiously, which means then that, you know, instead of having to go out there and announce it for a 30-day period, you know, maybe one week may be reasonably, may be reasonable. So you do it expeditiously, and you do it competitively. So at least go out and get three quotations, you know, and then, as provided in 5GCA. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel. And then, based, and then, and then finally saying, you know, and if all else fails, then sole source procurement will be your final, you know, last resort.
Senators, if you are all following the proposed amendment, I will go ahead and entertain it at this moment without it in writing, but anything with extensive language such as this, please, I would like to request your consideration and assistance to ensure that we get it in writing. The proposed amendment by Senator Attah is after the word "authority" to insert the words, "to the maximum extent possible procurement shall be achieved expeditiously and competitively as provided in 5GCA Article 3," comma, "sole source procurement shall be a method of last resort." Any comments, questions, or concerns with regards to that particular amendment? I have Senator Frank Blas, Senator Espada, and Speaker Wampat. Senator Frank Blas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I don't know whether that's going to serve purpose here, because if you look at the language above, it provides the option, but the option is exercise prior, you know, if you go out and look to see whether or not, as a result of sole source, you're going to be able to get it 20% cheaper, at least 20% less expensive otherwise. If we put then, it's changing the cart and the horse here. I don't know how we're going to be able to see whether or not we can maximize and utilize that benefit of sole source for a cheaper price if we have to do it in the front, if we have to go the bidding process in the front end.
Senator Attah, would you like to respond to the concern that has been raised by Senator Blas?
Well, but the way I understand Section 4 is that this, you know, this idea about going directly to the distributor, sole sourcing, is really an authority that is given to you, and it's an option that you can use, okay? But with the amendment that I made, we're really basically stating the spirit that we want them to pursue this competitively, expeditiously, and using the guidelines that's in Article 3 of Chapter 5GCA. So, you know, if, and we do say that sole source will be a, sole source by going directly to a distributor will be a method of last resort. So if they've already concluded that, you know, there's no way you're going to meet your timelines by doing it competitively and picking up the phone to get three quotes, then, then fine. But we're not saying you have to go directly first to a distributor and you have to do it. These are all options.
Thank you, Senator Attah. Senator Frank Blas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I appreciate, you know, the dialogue and trying to understand this. Again, it's, you know, changing the cart and the horse here. I don't know how we'd be able to exercise the option if we have to go the competitive bid process, if in the competitive bid process, okay, we do come up with an individual. How do we then exercise the option of sole source and see if we can get it 20% cheaper if we've already gotten to that, gone through that process?
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Blas, are you asking for anyone to respond on the floor?
I'm just throwing the question out here and see whether, as far as the discussion. I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to object to the amendment.
We do have Vice Speaker Cruz who would like to participate in the conversation. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
I just want, I just wanted to share with my colleagues that in the Court Order Number 5, Pharmaceutical Operations, it states, "Within 90 days of the effective date of this order, DOC shall establish and implement policies and procedures to effect, ensure effective and efficient pharmaceutical operations of DOC." So we're running up against an even shorter time clock. It's only 90 days on the pharmaceutical. And this provision was written by the Attorney General's Office. They're fully aware of the procurement statutes, but they're also aware that the court gave us 90 days within which to comply. And I'm asking for the indulgence of my colleagues to allow the Attorney General to have the provision that she wrote so that she can at least go to the court and say that she has this authority to be able to go forward. When we amend 5207 and we can put all these other provisions in there, I'm just, right now, just trying to address the court order and recognizing that we only have a 90-day window within which to advise the court that we've addressed this issue.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment by Senator Tom Attah? We have Senator Espada, you're recognized. On the amendment.
On the amendment, yes, I would have to chime in in agreement with the Vice Speaker on this one. We need to stay focused on what the purpose of this bill is, and that's to address the court order, which gives us a very limited time, amount of time, to correct the deficiencies that have been noted. And so with this, on this particular amendment, bottom line, it does put the procurement process before the sole source process. I believe that the author, or maybe even the Attorney General who submitted this section, really intended, let's expedite the purchasing. My concern is that if we allow this amendment to go forward, and the sole source option is the option of last resort, if through the competitive bidding process, there is a protest, all purchasing stops until that's resolved, and that will not go to the needs of addressing the court order within the limited timeframe. So I have a very big concern with that, and I would have to respectfully object to this section.
Thank you, Senator Espada. Senator Attah, you had your hands raised?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and just as a point of information, the gentleman raises a valid point about if a protest is raised, that, you know, there's an automatic stay that gets put in there. But we forget that there is a provision in 5GCA that that stay can be lifted by the chief procurement officer if it is in the best interest of the territory. So really, you know, that, if the chief procurement officer, who is part of the task force, determines that it would be in the best interest to lift that stay and concurred to by the AG, who's part of the task force, then that obstacle is removed. But, you know, again, we're saying that we think we know a vendor that's going to give us a price that's 20%, you know, less than what's out there. Well, maybe by getting three quotes, we may find that somebody's going to be able to give 25% less. And again, I think with the amendment that I'm proffering, it has not taken away, I don't think in any way, takes away the authorities that are being given in the first part of the section with respect to being able to go directly to a distributor, with respect to, and if the sole source is the method of last resort because, hey, we're down on the 80th day, then, okay. But still, the spirit of how this thing should proceed should be as, you know, on a competitive basis. Because if we all believe that with competition, you're going to get the best prices, then, then let's go with that.
Speaker Wampat, on the amendment, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. You know, I wrote some things down here. I was going to ask a question. I was happy to hear the Vice Speaker mention, because I was asking, what are the timelines in which we have to meet all of these court orders? And I know that the AG mentioned yesterday that 90% of the order is strictly for medical health plan, and that the 10% will be the physical plan. And, you know, and so we've got this 30 days, which he said was the shortest, of course, and I was wondering where does this fall in? So it's all within the 90 days. And if this truly is an emergency, I see it now as an emergency because of the timelines after hearing what the AG had to say. And I just, I don't want us to be bogged down with, and as much as I understand where the mover of the author is coming from, you know, after all, he does have that reform legislation for procurement. But this is something I truly don't want to get in the way with, especially because it is a district court order, and I like to have it move forward. There really isn't anyone on island who manufactures medication. There are pharmacies, however, who do distribute them, but if they are going to sell them, it's going to be at a cost and at for-profit. So we're definitely not going to get even that 20%. And I truly trust that, you know, after hearing the AG yesterday, how she was even going to make sure that she stays within her budget, even something as small as $700,000 to make sure that, you know, I trust that she would expeditiously then outsource all of these things to get them done, to the point where many of our own people in the government of Guam are stepping up to the plate now, truly wanting to help to make this happen. And I don't want us to be an impediment to that. We need to be very supportive of, you know, moving as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Vice Speaker Cruz, you had your hands raised? And then Senator Spejio.
I just wanted to inform the colleagues that if we don't give them the authority to purchase from the manufacturer, the distributor at this point, they're buying it from the pharmacies at nearly 1,000% more than what they would be getting it elsewhere. So they're really, seriously, I mean, I can't believe that a bear aspen is costing $10 when we could buy 100 bottle, 120 capsule bottle for less than that. But that's what they're doing, buying direct, buying by themselves, because they're not buying it through anybody else. They're just going out on a purchase order and they're, it really is, and they're trying to get a process together. They're writing the SOP for the long range, but they also need to make sure that they show the court that we've met a formulary for a correctional facility that meets national standards. We have all these medications in stock. We have access to all these psychotropic drugs in stock or accessible at mental health, but, I mean, behavioral health, health and wellness. And that's all they're trying to do at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Spejio, on the amendment, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Despite what's been said about the amendment and the opposition raised to it, for me, I don't see any harm in adopting what the mover's trying to propose. The authority is already given to the language that we have before us in Section 4. What I believe the amendment would do, it would just say, okay, you have the authority to procure this medication, provided that it's 20% less than what it would cost the Guam Memorial Hospital. But to adopt Senator Attah's amendment is a recognition by this legislature that, to the maximum extent possible, they still have to go out and do their due diligence and provide for the best possible cost for the procurement of these goods and services. So the authority is already, was already adopted. I think what Senator Attah is trying to do, and I support wholeheartedly, Mr. Chairman and colleagues, is that we're, we're providing for, we're reminding this government that there is a procurement process, that we're saying that people have to be held accountable. And I don't believe there's any harm in adopting the amendment that he's proposing. Thank you. that he's proposing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Respecho. Senator Espada, on the amendment, you recognize?
I, now I'm rethinking what I was about to say. But I do want to latch on to what a previous speaker was saying, and, and in terms of what was presented yesterday, that the development of the policies and procedures for the, for, uh, formularies, which includes a list of medicines and the law to purchase these and whatnot, are all within the next 30 days. And the purchase, I would imagine, would, would have to all happen within 90 days. And I, I just, I understand what, what the arguments of the mover of their proposal and the last speaker, the previous speaker is saying. So I'll, I'll end it right here. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. I'm still trying to figure this one out.
Thank you very much, Senator Espada. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment by Senator Tom Ada? Senator Ada, you recognize?
I just want to emphasize one point, that in, in the, in this procurement process that needs to be accomplished, you know, there's, there's, there's really two parts to it. One is developing the specifications of what is to be procured. What do you want? When do you want it? Where do you want it? What color, et cetera, et cetera. And that's, if, once that gets done, that's probably 90% of the work. And that's, and, and it is because that seems to be such a challenge that a lot of these things don't get out of the starting gate. But once that is done, the last 10% in getting quotations or whatever is, really is the, is the least of the obstacles or least of the hurdles that need to be, need to be overcome. Because then it's, it's, if you have good specifications, it's very clear. Vendors can take a look at this. Oh, I know exactly what they want. Yes, they want it on this date. They want it there, et cetera, et cetera. I can meet all those. But sometimes, you know, the, when, when we go out and procure, we don't even know what the heck it is that we want. But we expect vendors to know. And so, you know, so we're, we're kind of getting, I guess, wrapped around the axle that by not just give, you know?
I'm sorry, senators. Our colleague, Tom Ada, has the floor.
So, so again, the, the whole intent of the, my amendment was just to, you know, make it very clear that, yeah, okay, if you, if you really think sole source procurement is, is what's going to do the trick and is going to get you there in time, then go ahead and do it. However, we really still would rather that you do it competitively and do it expeditiously to the maximum extent possible. So...
Thank you Senator Ada. Vice Speaker Cruz, you have additional comments on the proposed amendment?
I also wanted to make sure that my comments earlier were not meant to say that I had any objections to the amendment. I have no objections to the amendment and just received word from the Attorney General's office. They have no objections to the amendment either.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Cruz, for that additional comment. Senator Espada on the amendment?
In light of that, in light of that, Mr. Chair, then I withdraw my objection.
So recognized. Any further comment or discussion on the proposed amendment by Senator Tom Ada? Senators, the amendment is to insert right after the word authority at the end of the section, "To the maximum extent possible, procurement shall be achieved expeditiously and competitively as provided in 5GCA Article III, comma, sole source procurement shall be a method of last resort." On the amendment to the amended section four, any objections? No objections? So noted. Clerk, do you have a copy of the, Senator Ada, if I could ask you to please provide the clerk's a copy of your proposed amendment or your adopted amendment on section four? Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussions on section four? Senator Espada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only other addition I'd like to actually add on to section four would be after the word, notwithstanding any other provision of law, GSA is authorized to procure medication directly from distributors. I would like to add on manufacturers as well. Just to make sure that everybody understands that they're not limited just distributors, but manufacturers as well.
So insert after the word distributors or manufacturers.
Maybe and/or. I don't know if that's appropriate to say and/or.
And/or. Okay. Senator Espada has an amendment to section four. Thank you Senator Espada. Right after the word distributors, to insert the words and slash or manufacturers. And then continue on with the verbiage for the Department of Corrections. Any discussions on that amendment to the amended section four? Yes, Senator Frank Blas, you recognize?
I appreciate, and I recognize, you know, I don't know whether it's, you know, grammatically or structurally, except we, I, I, I think, Mr. Chair, that kind would need to be researched by legal counsel, whether we can use and slash or.
She recommends just use, apply the word or.
Okay.
Senator Espada, would you like to?
I'll look to the guidance of legal counsel on that one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So the amendment to section four by Senator Espada would insert the word right after distributors or manufacturers, and then continue on with that language. Any further discussion on the amendment to section four by Senator Espada? No objections? So noted. Thank you, Senator Espada. Any further discussion? Senator Tom Ada, you have the floor on section four.
Well, not, not on section four.
On section four.
But since we've, the amendment passed, can, can we go back to section three? Because that's the same amendment that I would like to make on section three.
I will entertain that motion when we revert back after we conclude our discussion on the legislation. If you recall back, Speaker Wapat has an amendment. You also have an amendment to be proffered on section three, then I will entertain your amendment at that time.
Got it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on section four? If not, section four is fully vetted. Section five, reporting requirements. Senator Respecho, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, section five provides for reporting requirements on an update to the legislature every, after, every 20 days after each month and matters agreed upon in the United States District Court Status Report. We've heard from the Attorney General, we've heard from the sponsor of this bill, that although these reports will be required, those reports that are under seal by the court will not be submitted. But this bill as presented to us does not provide for the legislature's recognition of that. So I offer an amendment that would provide a new sentence at the end of section five, and it would say, "Illettori herein recognizes that the reports required under this section shall not be released if such reports are under seal by the courts." So we don't, without this language, Mr. Chair, if we don't make this clear, someone may think that all reports are subject to release, even though the AG will argue that it's not because it's under sealed by the court.
On Senator Respecho's proposed amendment, I did request a written version for all of our colleagues to review.
Well, I have it though. I didn't photocopy it yet to save paper because I thought I could just, I could read it again. Illettori herein recognizes that the reports required under this section shall not be released if such reports are under seal by the courts.
Okay. In spite of the, the request for copies of that particular amendment, Senator Respecho has an amendment that would recognize any sealed reports that are submitted to the, the US District Court. Any questions or comments, or would anyone like a written copy before we move on the adoption of that particular amendment? Senator Respecho's amendment is to add to section five the following language, which was read twice. Thank you, Senator Respecho. Illettori herein recognizes that the reports required under this section shall not be released if such reports are under seal by the court. So it does recognize the court jurisdiction in terms of seeing some of these reports. Any questions, comments, or objections on the proposed amendment by Senator Respecho to section five? No objections? So ordered. Any further discussion on section five? If not, moving forward to section six, fairly direct, effective date, section seven, no objections. Senators, we agree to revert back to section three because Senator Tom Ada has an amendment that he would like to proffer before the body, as well as Speaker Wapat. We will take a one-minute recess until we get copies of those amendments. The hall is now back in session. We were reverting back to section three based on a request by Senator Tom Ada and Speaker Wapat with regards to incorporating some additional amendments. My understanding is that their amendments have been addressed in other sections. So there has also been a request by Senator Frank Blas that we revert back to section two.
Actually, it's just a request in behalf of Senator McCreedy, and he's working on the amendment right now. It's quite related.
Is it an extended amendment?
Huh?
Is it an extensive amendment?
No, it's not. It's not, it's not.
Did you need a recess or?
Yeah. I, I, I think it's only going to cost us about $24 million, right, Brent? No.
Senator Frank Blas, you still have the floor. On section two.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think, first off, I'd like to yield to Senator McCreedy so that he can go ahead and explain his amendment.
Okay. Senator Frank Blas, you're yielding to Senator McCreedy. Senator McCreedy, on section two. Senator McCreedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to-
On section two, please.
On section two, I just, on the carryover part, 2014 appropriations, I just want to put at the end of this act, well, notwithstanding any provision of the law, the unexpected balance of appropriations from the general fund to the Office of the Attorney General for its operational and fiscal year 2014 shall not lapse and carry over into fiscal year 2015. Such funds shall only be expended up to $700,000 for the purpose described in section three of this act.
Okay. Senator McCreedy has a proposed amendment on line 24, page two, on section two, to insert after the word expended up to $700,000, and then continue with the verbiage for the purposes described in section three of this act. Any discussions or amendments or objections on the proposed amendment to section two? No objections? No objections? So noted. Amendment passes. Any further, senators, any further discussion on bill number 22 dash 33 COR, as corrected by the prime sponsor, substituted by the committee on appropriations and adjudication, and further substituted by the author on the floor, and further substituted by the committee on the whole? Any further discussions? Otherwise, I will recognize the sponsor of the legislation. Vice Speaker Cruz, any final comments? If not, majority leader, Senator Respecho, you're recognized on bill number 22 dash 33.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, having concluded the discussions on bill 22 dash 33, as corrected by the prime sponsor, substituted by the committee on appropriations and adjudication, and further substituted by the author on the floor, and further amended in the committee on the whole, I move that we rise with the, with the recommendations and amendments adopted while the committee on the whole remain intact. And for the record, again, the, the prime sponsor did this, but again, I want to thank on behalf of all of us, the panel that came in to provide the much-needed guidance with respect to this issue. So on that motion that we rise-
On that motion, not only to thank our, our colleagues for the active deliberation of this legislation, but also the panel members that did appear before the body, we extend our appreciation and cooperation. So on that motion, no objections? So ordered.
The legislature's back in session. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, first, I'd like to thank my vice chair for his excellent handling of the Committee of the Whole, and I'd like to move that Bill 22 be placed in the voting file with a recommendation to do pass.
Thank you very much. So on the motion, hearing, no objections. So ordered. On Bill 28-33, Senator Frank Uggan Jr., you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning to each of our colleagues. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 28-33COR, as amended by the committee, into the third reading file for discussion or for voting by the body, please.
Would you like to speak?
Just briefly.
Okay, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and to all of our colleagues, a copy of the letter that was just received a couple of days back by the Chief of Police regarding this particular measure has been distributed to each of your desks. That was distributed only now, only because we did not receive it prior to the conclusion of the committee report. Madam Speaker, this proposal would just delete a restriction in law that was passed back in 2011, and that restriction reads, as it applies, first of all, let me, let me just back up a little. In 2011, there was a requirement, and one of our colleagues here is very intimate with the entire process because she was the executive manager for the Antonio B. Wampat International Airport Authority, but back in 2010, 2011, there was a requirement that the Guam Police Department relocate its administrative offices at its headquarters to a different location, primarily because the Tiza Parkway was in the process of being finalized and they needed the airport facility, needed access to that particular parcel property where GPD was previously located. The initial agreement at that time was to allow GPD to be retained in government-owned properties because they did not, or they had not prepped or resolved the final location or identified a final location with regards to the headquarters as well as to the administrative function or operations. So, the legislation that was enacted back then allowed for GPD to reside in airport property, on airport property, for at least an additional two years while they were in the process of formulating, formulating and finalizing the permanent location for their headquarters. Well, Madam Speaker, that two-year timeline was back in September 30, 2013, so after a year and a half, there has been, there has not been sufficient activity or planning in terms of identifying a more permanent location for GPD. And this is more or less to clean up the law, to make sure that GPD is not operating its headquarters as well as administrative offices in a site that is contradictory to existing law. So it would just delete the language on page 2, line 19, in regards to the law that was passed back then, "But in no event shall GPD be allowed to utilize property in Tiza for its headquarters and administrative operations before September 30, beyond September 30, 2013." It would delete that particular language. It would not delete the provisions in that law that still require that GPD continue to plan in terms of identifying a more permanent headquarters or government facility for their operation. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for the consideration of our colleagues in supporting this particular legislation and just to clean up the books and allow GPD to continue to maintain their headquarters and their operations there. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, there being none, the motion then to send 28-33 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 35-33COR, recognize Senator Underwood.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would like to make a motion to place Bill 3533 in the third reading file, and I would like to speak on it, please.
So, but the bill is "as corrected by," can you read the rest of that?
Yes. Okay. "As corrected by the prime sponsor and substituted by the Committee on Early Learning, Juvenile Justice, Public Education, and First Generation Initiatives."
Thank you, Senator. So you may proceed.
Okay. I also want to thank you and Senator Rory Respecho for co-sponsoring this bill. Bill 3533, the First Generation Trust Fund Initiative establishes a trust account for each eligible ninth grader in Guam's public schools to be used upon high school graduation for attendance at the Guam Community College or the University of Guam. The First Generation Trust Fund Initiative proposes an entirely new approach to increasing enrollment in our two post-secondary institutions, UOG and GCC, and decreasing the number of students that drop out of high school. Bill 3533 is fundamentally intended to change that trajectory of hopelessness to one of success and self-reliance. There are many reasons why this approach is necessary and vital for our island's future and economy. First and foremost, we want to recognize or encourage success and incentivize achievement as early as possible in a young person's educational thinking. Currently, 66% of high school graduates in the U.S. attend a two-year or four-year institution immediately after graduation. In Guam, the most recent official data indicate that only 33% of our public school graduates go to GCC or UOG upon graduation. And out of the 1,700 students who graduated, only 590 enrolled either in GCC or UOG. That's about as low as you can get compared to the national average. It is also important to note that over the past three years, more than 1,100 students have dropped out of our public high schools. Today's eighth grader, next year's ninth grader, will face a future in which 65% of all new jobs will require college attendance in the year 2020. This would be the timeframe of their high school graduation. According to the Georgetown University Center for Education and Workforce, only 35% of all new jobs will require nothing more, nothing, require nothing but a high school diploma. In other words, when our students graduate from high school and a high school diploma comprises their job preparation, they will be competing for only one-third of the available jobs. For the sake of educational success and preparation for the future economy, we need to take dramatic steps to increase the likelihood of success and self-reliance for our young people. Of course, we need to take curricular, make curricular reforms that will prepare them for college and careers. We need to ensure that they are provided a safe environment for learning and provide new and modern facilities. But we also need the spark that speaks to each individual student. We believe in you, and we are willing to invest in you. Madam Speaker, let me highlight the major components of Bill 3533. Students must be continuously enrolled in Guam public schools from ninth grade to graduation to receive $500, which they can use for registration fees and tuition. Students must be U.S. citizens or permanent residents. Funding will come from DOE, GCC, and UOG with the following distribution: $100,000 from DOE, $200,000 from GCC, $250,000 from UOG. Family members may deposit into the student's individual account. Financial contributions may also be made to the fund by participating businesses, organizations, and organizations on behalf of students who perform community service. The Department of Education will manage the trust fund and may use up to 5% of the funds for administrative purposes. The DOE may enter into contracts to obtain investment advice and management and other professional services regarding the administration and investment of the initiative's funds. The fund shall not be commingled with the General Fund or any other funds of the government of Guam and shall be maintained in a separate bank account in accordance with this act. An independent evaluation shall be conducted to determine if the act has met its goal, and also, we have also included a sunset provision in that this initiative will come to an end by the eighth year of its enactment. A public hearing was held on February 9, 2015, on Bill 3533. The input was, for the most part, positive in that all three leaders of our educational organizations, namely the Superintendent of Education, President of GCC, and the President of the University of Guam, have expressed support for the First Generation Trust Fund Initiative. I also continued to work with them on the changes to the original bill that was filed. But we also have to acknowledge the questions that have been raised since Bill 3533 was first introduced. The Education Foundation Board was initially designated to raise $75,000 a year and manage the trust fund. The Education Foundation testified in support for the bill but questioned the effect of the bill's mandate for the foundation to raise a specific amount and manage the funds on the foundations, in light of the foundation's status as a nonprofit organization and its established bylaws. That input from the Education Foundation Board resulted in substitute Bill 3533, which deleted the foundation board's role and responsibilities, designated DOE to manage the funds, and increased the contributions of DOE and GCC to accommodate the $75,000 initially assigned to the Education Foundation Board. Number two, the second major question had to do with the equal protection clause, given that the eligibility requirement that students must be continuously enrolled in a DOE public school from the beginning of the ninth grade to the time they graduate. Bill 3533 was reviewed by the Office of the Legislative Council, and it was determined that the bill is not in violation of the equal protection clause since the intent of the bill outlines the rationale to provide and make available such funds to meet the needs of a specific group of eligible students. As noted earlier, only 33% of our public school students immediately enroll in post-secondary institutions immediately after graduation, as compared to 66% nationwide. Comparatively, here in Guam, between 90 and 99% of our students that are enrolled in private schools go on to attend college immediately after graduation. Another question had to do with the citizenship status requirements and whether the bill discriminates based on alienage. Legal counsel has advised that Bill 3533 is not discriminatory based on alienage because students who are permanent resident aliens are eligible. Comments have been made about raising our students' aspirations by using the funds that will be set aside for the First Generation Trust to boost existing curricular and extracurricular programs or using the funds for much-needed repairs of our school buildings. Madam Speaker, I commend the Department of Education for the adoption and implementation of the Common Core standards and the new student assessment program, ACT Aspire, which provides a better measure of students readiness for college and careers. The annual State of Public Education Report lists numerous exemplary programs that schools are already implementing to help prepare students for college and work. Among the programs that have helped to increase the graduation rates and lower the dropout rates are Esquala Puengi, which is a night school, the Positive Behavior Incentives and Supports, PBIS, the Home School Connections, Character Education, Upward Bound, Tourism Academy, GCC High School Programs, Dual Enrollment with UOG, and the list goes on and on. The trio of programs at UOG and GCC have also successfully helped hundreds of students graduate from college, but none of those programs have successfully addressed the aspiration deficit among the majority of our public school students as demonstrated by the 33% that go on to enroll in post-secondary education. It is also important to note that DOE receives around $20 million a year from federal funds to supplement the core curricular programs. And so, the question about whether we are taking away or whether we're depriving the students of additional support for the core curricular programs is answered by the fact that DOE receives around $20 million of federal funds to support the core curriculum program. As a matter of public policy and the name of the next, and in the name of the next generation, we must invest in our students and our institutions. We think that college in other places is fine, but we know that when students attend UOG or GCC, they stay in Guam and they build our island. I believe that we can promote success and self-reliance in the most efficient way, one student at a time. For many of our young people, it will be the first time that they thought about college. For many families, they will feel the pride of encouraging the first college student in their family. For GCC and UOG, they can start advertising their programs and communicate with these potential students and customers. For educators in GDOE, it will reduce the high school dropout rate and facilitate conversations about the future in real and not imaginary ways. We believe that with the cooperation of UOG, GCC, and DOE, and more importantly, the general public, this bill will change the live chances of the next generation, which is the first generation of our young people to be able to enjoy this unique opportunity. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I have Senator Siniklis and then Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 35-33. I think it's a very, a very good bill that's going to not only...
Point of order.
Please state your point of order.
Thank you, Madam, I apologize to the good senator from, Madam Speaker, this clearly appears to be a bill that is going to affect the appropriations, current and future appropriations for certain agencies. And so, I guess, more important is that we're going to be resultant to the Committee of the Whole to be able to address some of the issues with regards to the bill.
We're going to take a brief recess. The legislature is back in session. During the recess, of course, there's been some, you know, dialogue about this, but I'm going to go ahead and defer then to the Majority Leader that would, you know, take us and move us forward.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It appears that a colleague rise to a point of order, asking whether or not this is an appropriation bill, and if so, should then we resolve in the Committee of the Whole, and we should do that automatically, or we just waive that standing requirement? But after the recess you called, and during that recess, there's, I believe, this consensus that we do recognize this bill and the rule that provides for us to go in the Committee of the Whole. So I move at this time that we resolve in the Committee of the Whole, and this time we continue to allow the Appropriations Chairman to be Chairman of this Committee of the Whole for this bill, and that we recess until two o'clock today. But in the meantime, we also, under this motion, give the Chair and the prime sponsor of this bill the latitude to invite whomever they wish to invite to represent the panel, which would provide that kind of discussion for this bill. So I make that motion at this time.
Having heard the, the motion, is there any objection?
No objections.
No objection, that's so ordered. So we will recess until then two o'clock this afternoon, and that we would allow the Chairman, Oversight Chair in Finance, and the Chair of Education to call individuals in to sit in the Committee of the Whole.